Good evening, welcome to our November meeting. And according to South Carolina Community Information Act, Section 3480-E, South Carolina Code of 1987's Amendment, all meetings in the media area be notified of date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. Before we have our prayer, let us observe a moment of silence in memory of our friend and colleague, Dr. Thelma Dawson, who passed away since our last meeting. She served on this board, I think, over thirty years, and we can never say enough about what she meant to all of us, what she did for Darlington County. And she will be not with us, but she will never be forgotten. And this time, we have our prayer by Mr. Govan.
Let's first take a moment of silence. Amen. Father, it is again, Lord, that we come as humbly as we know how, to answer you, God, to direct our path. As we make decisions that are in the best interest of our children and the citizens of Darlington County, we ask, God, you to allow us to do that with understanding, with sound judgment, and with respect for each other. This will be asked in your name. Amen.
May I stay up for the pledge, Mr. Henson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, I now ask for approval of your agenda.
Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Second. Discussion, our favorite motion. I oppose. As have it. Citizens' comments, any who signed up?
Yes.
I'll read the procedures for our citizens' comments. The first thirty minutes of the monthly meeting will be set aside for three-minute input sessions for citizen participation. Participation will be approved on a first come, first talked basis as recorded or logged, which is provided. Public input should be in the form of suggestions, information, or comments pertaining to programs, schools, or the school district. Based on legal advice of our council, comments should not be made either complimentary or critical, namely, student, school employee, administrator, or board member as these matters or personnel matters that require an executive session. Speakers' comments will be received only as board information. Mr. Jamie Kelly, Ms. Tammy Kelly. Welcome. How are you?
Well, how about yourself? So I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight in a couple of roles. First of all, as a parent of two children that are in the school district, and also as a business owner who currently employs current students as well as recent and some not so recent graduates of the school district. And what I want to come and talk about is the mental health counselors in our district. So as the statistics do show, our need for mental health counseling is at an all-time high. So in 2021, fifty-six point two percent of the South Carolina students with depression did not receive any care. And the latest data shows there's been a fifty-five percent increase of children experiencing depression or anxiety in the last four years. In South Carolina, the child and teen death rate has increased by thirteen percent in the past decade. And death by suicide is one of the leading causes of death in children in South Carolina ages ten to seventeen. It also shows that youth that grow up in poverty are two to three times more likely to develop mental health conditions. And as we all know, all the students, specifically in the middle and the high school, recently have had an increase of anxiety due to the increased violence in the schools as well as in our community. So I come to you tonight with a question. I would like to know, what is the plan for the district to achieve the two hundred and fifty to one ratio of students to mental health counselors that is recommended by the American School Counselor Association? Because if we fail to act in a timely and appropriate manner, what disadvantage are we really placing all of the students in the school district, no matter what their journey is after they graduate? And also, what disadvantage are we placing the employees and employers in our school district who are going to be at some point in time employing these students? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate you coming. Okay, moving on to consent items. Men's, October tenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting, approval.
Make the motion we approve.
Second. Discussion. Our favorite motion. I oppose. As have it. Built education admissions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration for admission.
Second. Discussion on that. Our favorite motion. I oppose. As have it. Honors, awards, and recognitions. Fifty-sixth Annual National Career Development Association Art and Poetry Contest Winner, Ms. Carlita.
Good evening. We have three students this evening that we'd like to recognize for their works. Students, when we call your name, if you would please come forward so that we can get a picture with you and our superintendent and board chair, parents, or if you are here, we'd ask that you also stand so you can be recognized as well. Our first award is the Fifty-Sixth Annual N-C-D-A Poetry and Art Competition. Two students in our district won first place in their divisions in the National Career Development Association's Annual Art and Poetry Contest. Both students who won these recognitions won in the spring of last year, which was spring twenty twenty-two, and they were students at the Darlington County Virtual Academy at the time. And Ms. Dee Driggers was there, our teacher. Our first student was Abigail Shannon. She is currently a student at Bayroad Elementary, third grade. She won first place in the art division for the second through, excuse me, K through second grade. Abigail Shannon, she's not here, okay. And our second award winner was Becky Yang, who's currently a fifth-grade student at Lamar Spalding Elementary. She won first place in the art division for third through fifth-grade students. There you go. A recognized voter, Ms. Jefferson. And this here is all, and so is Dr. Owen. All right, our next recognition is the twenty twenty-two Darlington County School District Holiday Card Art Contest. All right. London, is it, Carell Faison, a second grader at the Darlington County Virtual Academy, is the winner. Principal. Ms. Carla Jefferson, and a teacher again, Dee Driggers. His artwork. His artwork features a penguin and snowman dressed in winter apparel and Santa's flying overhead sleigh in his sleigh. This will be printed on the cover of the district's official holiday card. He will also win fifty dollars for his artwork, and his teacher will receive a hundred dollars for art supplies.
Got all kinds of stuff.
Y'all screwed it nice and tight.
Congratulations to all the winners there. Great, great job. Okay, moving on to reports, administration presentations. District's strategic plan meeting will be held Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, six to eight p.m. at the Mayo Conference Center in Darlington. The next regular Darlington County Board of Education meeting is scheduled for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at six p.m. at the Door Training Room here in Darlington. Hard to believe, it's almost Christmas time, isn't it? We'll have a little more regular meeting after tonight. Moving on to quarterly reports. Question on those. Budget reports, questions. What's your name? Do you think I'm the one here there? District Social Emotional Learning Committee, I think they are.
Yes, they are, yep.
Okay, good evening again. Dr. Newman asked us right after, or right after we got back in from the pandemic, and I want to say right during the pandemic, I should say, to bring a district committee together that would focus on the social and emotional needs of our students as well as the adults in our district. And so we did develop a committee that was district-wide that came together and not only identified the needs that we have, but also began to work on creating strategies. This group then worked closely with schools to create their own committees at the school level who would then dig a little deeper and have a more laser-like focus of what the needs are and strategies for helping our stakeholders in their own buildings. So today, we have Ms. Nikki Spears and Ms. Laura Privet, okay, and Ms. Bean walked in to present to you, and they're going to give you an overview of some of the work that they've been doing in our district that has been very, very beneficial, not only for our students, but also our adults. Thank you so much for allowing us to come in and talk with you all.
I'm good. I just want to make a quick announcement.
Do you notice playing something on there?
So I gave it to you.
Oh, wait. Sorry, I have. He told me that he was going to present. Okay, I'm sorry. That's our time going on, so you. Well, I'm going to go ahead and start talking while she gets that together. What we're going to share is what SCL is and how it's working in Darlington County School District. We have a model that we use. SCL, the definition of SCL is basically an educational concept that helps our students gain skills that would help them now and beyond when they graduate. So what we've done is we have modeled the council model that has been around since like the nineteen nineties, and they have certain concepts, components that they use. The components, they have five components. They use self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. So this is the model that we use in Darlington County School District. That's the big picture. So overall, we're trying to get the community involved as well as the families, the caregivers, as well as the school. So because we're in the school and the classrooms daily, in order to make this work, the SCL has to be effective. The social-emotional learning has to be effective in the schools as well as the classroom, and then we will push out to the families as well as the community. And like I said before, we use those five components as our guidelines to teach our children as well as the adults in the building about social-emotional learning. Okay? And simply, that framework is if we have an effective social-emotional learning program, it'll improve the climate as well as the learning environment, plus teach and model specific SCL skills, and then we'll have positive results from our children. How is that proven? We have research. Research, research shows that for, on SCL, using SCL, it produces student success. So what does that do? It increases the academic outcome, and that's documented. If we use that, eleven percent, based on data, based on research, has improved, gained standardized achievement test, excuse me, and it also reduces the risk of failure. On the other side of that, our adults in our school, if they, if we have an effective program, the adults, it helps to recognize, understand, and label, basically regulate their emotions. If we continue to use like Orange Frog, SCL, and that's what we've combined, the Orange Frog and SCL, to make sure that our adults in the school are able to have a, their emotions are under, you know, regulated so that they're able to create a better learning environment for the students. And the last point, the student, the school leaders, if they support the strong SCL, then we're able to maintain positive and trusting relationships. And I think with the Orange Frog as well as social-emotional learning, that's what we're trying to do. So the core team basically meets, and then we also have a district level from each school, like Ms. King was saying. So we meet, and then we just come together and make sure that we are putting things in place, not anything extra for the teachers, but just having some taboo morale as well as for the students. Ever since COVID came, you know, we just want to make sure that we are. Ever since COVID came, you know, we just want to make sure that we are helping the students in recognizing those feelings.
As you can see, 92% of surveyed executives say skills such as problem talking and communicating clearly are equally or more important than technical skills. So the top 10 skills identified by the World Economic Forum all involve social and emotional competence. And I'll let you look at those 10 things. And as Ms. Spears had said, this is not something extra that we are trying to throw in on any of our teachers, schools, leadership. This actually goes right along with the profile of the South Carolina graduate. Competencies give us the tools to provide transparency and measurement. This profile of the South Carolina graduate serves as a shared vision of the knowledge, skills, and characteristics needed for students to be successful in higher learning and careers. The profile allows all of us across all sectors to speak a common language around a common goal towards unifying expectations of our students' futures in grades K through 12. It also makes the profile of the South Carolina graduate actionable by helping define and measure transferable skills. It provides multiple entry points to meet the needs of our unique learners and their diverse needs and interests. And it tends to hold child both academically, socially, and emotionally. Now, what we have up here right now is, this is our universal screener. We give these three times per year. Grade six through 12 uses a program called Panorama, and these are the district results from, we took that in August? This is from August, and you notice that they actually are showing a percentage of growth or decline, and that is compared to the end of last year's results, which was from May. Yeah, we did that in May. One of the ones that we're actually most proud of is the very bottom, the teacher-student relationships. We came up 3%. And that is one of the things that is so huge in this whole social emotional learning. You've got to make those connections. You've got to have that rapport with your students. You've got to understand their interests, where they're coming from. And every single school has different needs. So if you were to look at every single school's data, they would have different strengths and they would have different weaknesses than the other high schools or middle schools. The next slide is actually what the kindergarten through fifth grade uses as their universal screeners. And it is called X-SEL. And this is just, we had actually started with Panorama last year for kindergarten through, actually no, it was third. We started at third, so third through fifth had done Panorama as well. But what we had found was that we didn't really feel as though the children were understanding the questions because it really was not geared towards their level. And we brought that up to our leadership, and we were able to come together and be more beneficial for what we felt would be more valid results for our elementary students and by using the X-SEL for kindergarten through fifth. And what we found actually was a huge difference. They responded so much better because it's set up in like a game type of format. And actually, I'm actually telling you one of the secrets, but the emotion regulation, they wanted to see their actual, like if they were able to not get upset with the computer. So they're actually in the middle of a game, and one of the rocket ships starts going slow. And the whole point of the game is to be as fast as you can, so they actually tap, how many times the kids are tapping to, and then like, "It's not working, it's not working." I have to explain to them, "No, just keep doing, just keep doing what you're doing." And it's actually testing things without them even knowing. But we have found that that's actually given us a lot more valid results than what we felt with Panorama. But like I said, we have covered Panorama for sixth through 12th grade. And that's also what the staff has given us, their universal screener, three times a year as well, is the Panorama.
My name is Laura Privet, and I'm the school counselor at North Hartsville Elementary. And so we're going to pick up here. So SCL in South Carolina and what that looks like as a state. Darlington County, we're actually leading the way as one of the leading districts in our state for social emotional learning. And we are ahead of the game because we are a data-based driven program. So we are looking at the data that Ms. Bean just described, and we are looking at that data and tracking our students' social emotional learning and growth. And with that data, we are putting programs and small groups, counseling and support. We're doing a lot of things individualized and school-wide to try to provide support in those weak areas and celebrating those growth areas. But in South Carolina, what our state is doing right now, if you want to go take a look when you have a chance, the State Department has a website already created. It's called Personalized Learning. And that is where they house our social emotional learning content for our state. And what we are doing as a state right now is we have taken the castle model that we just described to you, and we are combining it with our South Carolina graduate. And so if you'll look in your green folder, we have some components there where they have combined both. And it's really written out very well structurally to let you see examples, very defined descriptions of what this looks like in the classroom, how a teacher can incorporate this. So social emotional learning isn't just a program. This is a way of life. This is trying to make sure that we are embedding social emotional learning in every single part of the school, whether it's PE or ELA, social studies, science, art. We're trying to make sure that we are taking time and taking advantage of situations to be able to incorporate social emotional learning into all academic areas and ways of life so that we can enhance and increase the skills that are needed for the workforce, so that we can support our students' social emotional growth, so they have better relationships with each other. This will help our behavior, discipline issues, mental health issues. This is going to help provide support for that and help decline some of those needed areas that we're seeing. So they are using all of these components and putting them together. And so this is where we're headed with trying to incorporate some of these components into all areas of learning in Darlington County. All right, so we have a vision statement, and our vision statement here for Darlington County is that the Darlington County School District community will work together to support social and emotional well-being, leading to healthy and fulfilling lives for all students and staff. This is our mission as our Darlington County School District for SCL. So how we lead in SCL, so every school has an SCL committee. It's usually made up of your administrators, school counselors, social workers in your school. Also, we'll incorporate teachers as well on the team, reading coach, curriculum coach. Really, you want to incorporate all areas, have a representative of all areas in your building as a part of the team. And we meet monthly. We look at our data, and we look at our programs that we are implementing, and strategies and interventions that we are putting in place to try to support the social emotional learning for our students and to build these important skills that our students need in order to go out into the world after graduation and be productive citizens and to be able to be effective in their careers. So we have these school-level teams, and we're meeting monthly. And we're also wanting to make, what we're really trying to work towards this year, this is our third year doing this. So we've really tried to figure this out. It's been definitely a growing, a growth process. But right now, we're really trying to focus on how to integrate into academic instruction. Not adding anything to our teachers' plates, but just providing awareness. For example, at North Hartsville, one of our fifth grade teachers, she has a character SCL wall for ELA. And once they get done with the book, they have a discussion about what character trait or SCL trait would this, you know, would this particular book fall under and why? So just trying to find that extra little kind of pathways to integrate and plug in for SCL. So collaborative efforts, we're also, of course, working with our Orange Frog Initiative and current district initiatives to just make sure we are doing everything we can. We're also trying to do an SCL day once a month where we, school-wide, just have a one day a month that everyone is focused on that one particular social skill. For example, for November, it's gratitude. So putting some things in place for gratitude and teaching that skill to our students and trying to implement that. And then we, of course, look at our data. No, you're good. You can go ahead. And so we have combined our SCL with Orange Frog. So we already have it established for each month, and we've incorporated both to just try to encourage social emotional learning and just have an awareness of it so that we all can work together to build a good community for our school, a positive culture, and continue to work on these really important needed skills. Also, if you'll look in front of, in your folder, there is a scan code. And if you have your phone or iPad with you real quick, I'd like for you to scan that code. So this is going to take you to, I don't know if you've ever heard of Padlet before? It's kind of new. It's new to me, too. But so I want you to check that out because basically it's a really neat folder, virtual folder, where we have all different types of SCL district-wide examples for you to look at what is going on in our schools in our district. We also have, all the documents in this presentation today is there for you to digest. I know we have thrown a lot at you. So this is probably something you're going to want to go later and kind of sit through and really kind of digest and look through. And if you have any questions, we really would absolutely love for you to come talk with us at any time. More about this is something we're really passionate about, and we feel like is going to be really productive and just so important for our students. So take a second. Are you guys able to find that? Are you seeing it? Yes? So each school, you'll be able to kind of go through and look and see all the different SCL initiatives we have going on and celebrations that we have going on, and then you'll also be able to find the documents in there as well. All right. Thank you so much for your time, and Ms. Bean is going to.
All right, this quote comes from Where the Crawl Dads Sing. "Autumn leaves don't fall, they fly. They take their time and wander. On this, their only chance to soar." So I know the three of us, and I know we're missing a couple of people today, but I'm telling you that this core group I have been so blessed to work with, we are so passionate about this. And we just constantly think about the whys behind this whole initiative of SCL. And it is not just a COVID thing. It is, it's everything. It's why we came into education. It's developing these students to be the most successful human beings that they possibly can. So I just want you to take just a second, and I want you to think about your why. Any student, any, it could be current, former, think about your why. And think about how this could possibly help that student to become the best person that they possibly can. So we appreciate you listening to us today.
Anyone have any questions? Is this for all students?
Every school.
Every school.
High school to K through 12, everybody.
So on your one slide there where you had the performance and the increase, what is considered a good increase? I saw one and two and three. So I think five, seven, I think 10, 20. So what are y'all, what are your goals? What do you, that drive success, that we were successful in that percentage increase?
So we would like to see all those areas being average or above. And as you could see, a lot of those areas are below averages, particularly with middle and high school. Elementary, we are seeing more, more men, more average and above. Self-control is usually our weak area, but developmentally, I mean, children are learning that. So but middle and high, we are seeing, we're in the red zone on a lot of this, which shows us the importance and need.
He's asking, how do you do the goals? And so I believe what you're asking is how do they develop what is average or what is normed? It depends on everybody that takes it, and they look at it not only nationally, but look at it throughout our district, and they norm.
So it's nationally normed.
On the panorama slide, I'm going to have Ms. King pull it back up. But the panorama slide, this is actually the Darlington County School District for sixth through 12th grade. But as you can see to the right, it's to national, like it's compared to national. But when we actually look at our own individual schools, we have the data of what our schools are comparing to Darlington County and also nationally. So like I said, it's hard to answer that question exactly because every school is going to be different. But ultimately, we're looking for growth of any sort.
So a team would look at this, and they would take their lowest, you know, area, and they would put some things in place to try to see that increase in winter. And then if it's not working, then we need to go back to the drawing board and figure something else out to try to increase. So we're not just throwing out programs and doing different things. We're actually being able to see whether they're productive or not.
So currently, what we're doing also is we've got to go back to our schools. We take this data, and then each school will come back to the district level and tell. And then we will, they will have plans in place for our growth for each school.
And I know I actually use this data as my GVE for this year. My, something that I had noticed at the end of last year was that the students were struggling with the self-regulation. And something that we had put into place that was more spawning was something called Zones of Regulation. And it's recognizing feelings and emotions. And then we make what is really a piece of paper, but we call it a Zones of Regulation Toolbox. But they have strategies for every, there's four zones, four colored zones. And they know which feelings and emotions are in each zone. And then they have different strategies adapted to themselves. Like everyone is different. It's not just copy this down. It's what they feel might be a good coping skill for them during that particular zone that they're in. And because when we go into the different zones, our brain's not working at full capacity. So a lot of times, that's why they can't think of their coping skills at that time. So that's why they have it on their paper. And they actually, all the teachers that I work with, third through fifth grade, they actually have a special place for the students to put it in a folder so they have access to it at any time that they need it.
Another thing I meant to mention as well is, so every school has an SCL lead. And so we, as a district, meet monthly under Dr. Jenkins. And we look at the data as a district. We also look at our own school data, and we meet and monitor that way as well as a district.
So how long has this program been in existence?
We've been doing this since COVID. Yeah, so probably about three years, three years now, yeah.
There was one slide there, I think it said that average 11% increase in scores or something.
11% increase in standardized scores.
Over how long? What kind of period of time would that take? Or do we know?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I'd have to go back and look at the research.
I think that was a state, I think that was a state statistic that we were given.
Yeah, that could be statistical, though.
Yes. But we've actually had, by the State Department, it was the State Department of Education that has told us that we are leading the way in Darlington County.
Yeah, so a couple, the first week of October, South Carolina State Department and Personalized Learning, they came in and met with all SCL directors, and we had a training with them as well. So we're very in touch with the State Department on this and working hard. And we also went to Harvard.
The very, the very last slide that had all of our pictures on it, that was us at Harvard. We actually got to attend the Social Emotional Learning Institute at Harvard, and they have actually mentioned to us about us coming and presenting there next year.
Very good.
So.
This is our district.
Just kind of follow up to Laura, that one of the key parts of the committees, the school-based committees, is helping identify our students that. is helping identify our students that may be struggling too, right?
Yes.
And so not only is it to build the skills, the character traits and, and you know, profile of a South Carolina graduate traits, but also to identify if we've got some students that are struggling and help them find or their parents find some solutions, is that?
Yes, I'm glad you said that. So right now, so I'm running a small group right now and I, and those, the students that are involved in my small group, I chose them to be a part of my group based off of the SEL surveys and scores. So and some of those students have really high scores and some may have struggling scores. So that way we can build and work together. But I'm using this data to be able to kind of pull kids that I know are in need of support, so.
And something we're doing at Lamar Spalding, we actually have a boys group that's called Men of Distinction. And Sergeant Nelson helps to lead that. And it also gets our SRO involved as well. And we actually have a mix of students, some that would be very good role models, but then also those that we feel need role models as well. And they, we actually, this past meeting that we had, we talked about accountability and what that meant and what that meant for them. And they have been checking in on each other. We check, we check grades, we check attendance, we check discipline. So we're really hoping to see some good strides come from that as well.
And Ms. Harrison, she is the Hartsfield High School Counselor. She's also a part of our core team. She was supposed to be here tonight, but cheerleading competition got moved to tonight, so she wasn't able to be here. But please check out her, all of her items in Padlet so that you can see on the high school level what social emotional learning is looking like as well.
And then to end it off with the Virtual Academy, I tried to get the parents involved. So when we have parent night, I tried to go over one of the components for, of SEL.
And I think it's key is, again, as we focus on the mental wellbeing of our students and staff, this is just another layer that is helping, you know. Ideally, we have enough mental health, you know, counseling in the buildings, but what this, this helps at least identify some students and works towards that as well. Is what I've heard y'all talk about. And one other note I'll make is that this group presented at the principal's meeting. And I think, you know, they were, they were a little starstruck tonight because at the principal's meeting, you all were like all over that room with all your activities demonstrating everything in your schools. And I know I told you to kind of keep it, you know, to a shortened time, so I appreciate that. But we do appreciate what you all have been doing and what you share, but most importantly, how passionate you are about the kids that you're serving too. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, anyone? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 2022-23 Goals Update. Dr. Newman?
Chairman Jeffries, members of the board and our audience, again, want to keep monthly updates with our annual goals that we have in place. And of course, our committee that presented is, is part of that update. But of course, safety and security, we have received additional wands, newer technology wands that we've been able to utilize, especially at our sporting events, but also in our larger schools that are helping again check for weapons detections along with the larger weapon detections that we have. This is helping again with some of the numbers when we run the whole school through those particular units that we're using. And then also more information on card access and more, you know, we, we've been doing assessments of where we need more card access and doors. And so we have initiated with the vendor, that should be starting up soon. And we're, of course, that's being funded out of our COPSS grant that we have, we received a few years ago, which is safety and security. You remember the consultants, the national consultants that helped us identify some things? You know, this is being, you know, funded through that COPSS grant. So again, trying to make sure that we secure our, our doors and our campuses as much as possible at this point. Of course, our mental health supports, our group that just presented, they're, they're a big part of that. Again, we have a district committee that you saw that group, but, but also the, the school committees that are helping identify students and, and on both sides. So students that are strong leaders and developing that leadership part of our students and allowing those students to take more of a leadership role, but also students that may be struggling and helping them and their families, but you know, get some potential help. We're, you know, again, working with that. So of course, we have the mental health coordinator position that the first round of interviews have been done. We hope to be finalizing that over the next couple of weeks here to bring back to the board and hope to have that position in place to spearhead, you know, again, mental health wellness in the district. Our parent and guardian involvement, again, we, I mentioned at the last meeting about getting started with some of our students and parents that are three, four-year-olds, two to, two to four-year-olds that are in the community and getting them prepared for kindergarten. And so we've had, again, a couple grants that we've received. And one of those is we've got, we're going to be working with 25 parents in each community location, sets of, you know, parents of students in our district. And so in Lamar, Hartsfield and Darlington, there'll be 25 families that we'll be working with to help build up, for example, literacy and reading and what that looks like for a child that's three years old or four years old that's not in the school system yet. But we know they'll eventually wind up with us. But also, again, helping those social skills and those social traits for students. So that is coming up soon. That will be our teachers that will actually be helping with that. And again, the tentative date, start date for that is December 1st, that we'll be having that in our three communities. We're also exploring another program that is called Waterford. And what that is, is that's actually a coaching model where, again, our, our, our parents and guardians will have a coach, kind of a family coach, so to speak, that will again try to help build in the skills for the children that they're going to need to be successful when they come into our buildings. And so again, that, that is, we're looking to start that in the second week of December. And then also there's a First Steps Family Strengthening Cohort that we're working on. This is something that originally started at West Hartsfield a few, probably two or three years ago. Julie Mann had a program there where she was working with families and they met on a regular basis. We fed them, but again, it's, it's parenting skills. And so we have a lot of prongs that we're trying to work with students that are between the ages of two and four years old and their families to try to help them be ready for when they come to school in the school district. So again, once we've had a few of these meetings and we're able to give more information, show some pictures, maybe even have some people come talk with us about it. And then also along the lines of, of what we were talking about with social emotional and Orange Frog, we have our monthly challenge this month, of course, is gratitude. But, but for Orange Frog, it's Random Acts of Kindness. And so every school will implement their own Random Act of Kindness event. And so I've given the latitude for our principals to decide what that looks like for them, what day they may choose to do that, or afternoon, or evening, or Saturday, whatever works for their school. But they've put together plans where they're doing Random Acts of Kindness in their community for their community members, but more importantly, getting our, our children and students involved and what that looks like to give and what kind of feeling that creates when our students actually give back and how they respond to that. So that's the parent guardian involvement. And of course, academic achievement. I will be discussing our current report cards that have recently come out. And I think that might even be next on the list if I'm not mistaken. So it is, yeah, school report cards. So I'm going to switch computers over here so our audience can see what's going on.
And so board members have a copy of what I have on this board here. But this has our report card ratings on it for each of our buildings in the school district. And then it also has our goals that we are looking to achieve to improve our report card ratings too. So I think first and foremost, just to, we need to make sure that we give a shout out to our excellent schools. And so we do have Lamar Spalding Elementary and Mayo High School with us tonight that had excellent report card ratings. And of course, Nicole Jones down at Spalding Middle School had an excellent report card rating too. So again, job well done, great job. And then also we had a couple good schools as well going to middle school with Eddie Schuler and Lamar High School was good as well. In fact, Lamar High School just missed the excellent category, which would have put the trifecta down on Lamar, but they missed it by just a couple of points. But again, they had good ratings. And so, and also just to kind of highlight too, there were four schools that they were one point away from making the next category rating. And so Rosenwall Elementary School, Thornwell School of the Arts, Hartsfield Middle School and Hartsfield High School, all three of those, all four of those schools missed the next category by one point. So you know, Corey Lewis, I know you're here with us, one point would have made you good instead of average. And I know, you know, on one hand, it's frustrating to miss it by one point, but on the other hand, we know we can get that point next year. So I know you all are working on plans to do that. And so what you'll see on the right-hand side is our goals for this year and how we hope to improve our report cards. Now, remember with report cards, there's a lot involved here. There's the achievement, right? What is the achievement scores for any given school? So in the elementary schools, it's SC Ready and SC Pass. And in the high schools, it's EOCs as well as the ACT scores and graduation rates. So, so everything that we talk about with academics is wrapped up into the report cards along with some of the SEL that you just heard about too. So there's surveys in there that students and parents and teachers take about, do they feel safe in their schools? Do they feel that their schools are focused on instruction? Do, do children feel safe in their schools? Do they feel that their teachers care about them? So report cards are a culmination of not just academic achievement, but also the social emotional piece that we've been talking so much about. And that's why we continue to say, yes, the academics are important, but so are the other pieces because they actually factor into the report card scores. So again, I think those schools that had only one point to get, obviously their goals, we've added on a couple of extra points because we feel like all of our schools can improve by several points. But if we can get to the next category, if each of our schools can get to the next category, our report card ratings will improve dramatically in the school district. I think everybody is focused on that. Everybody's been looking at their report card data at their schools specifically and finding out, okay, what can we do? Remember, growth is part of the report card data, so not just achievement data, but actual growth. That's where, for example, Nicole and Christie got lots of points was, was on their growth. Not necessarily high achievement, their achievement was good, but their growth was significant, meaning they're moving their kids. And so, you know, that's what we're, we're trying to stay focused at the high school levels, you know. I know Hartsfield High School had good increases in algebra test scores and that helped move that up and helped that with the report card. So we're intently focused on the academic achievement part, but also on the academic growth. And then of course, the other SEL pieces that give us points in the report card rating. So we hope this time next year that when we come back to the board and talk about report cards, that we're able to talk about the next categories that everybody was able to get to. Again, this is the first time that they've had report cards since before COVID. So you know, realize there's a lot that's happened in four years. And so I think every district would tell you that their report cards are different than what they were prior to COVID. But at least it gives us a standardized metric that we can look at. And again, it wraps up all the things that we look at to improve our schools. All of that's wrapped up in the report card. So again, those are the goals that we're working on for this coming year in our schools. And then of course, our schools will also have their SC Ready goals that we're working on, which will be based on meets exceeds. And then of course, you know, the EOC goals that we're working on for the schools as well. So that's the academic update of what we're working on currently and what the schools are focused on.
Any questions, anyone? One.
Who set these goals? Did the individual schools set their own or, I mean, just curious?
These are me saying you're one point away from the next.
I mean, because some of them is like nine points, some of them is two, three points, some of it, so.
Good question. So that, the nine points is what it's going to take to get to the next category?
Okay.
Okay, so, so all these were set to get to the next category? But to your point, like for, for Hartsfield High School, they only needed one point to get to the next category. But we know they're going to do better than just one point, right? But some schools, to your point, it may take eight or nine points to get to that next category. That's, that's a heavier lift, obviously. But that's what we're hoping to do is to get to the next category.
And are these, are these points set the same year to year or are they normed differently every year?
No, they're, they're, the state gives us that, they have that template of the points that are to be achieved.
And will the growth be off the new growth model? Is that how that will be determined?
Not, not next year. The year after is tentatively set for the new growth model. But next year is a reporting and again, several conversations we all have had about this, they're still ironing out the details of the growth model. So they're still trying to figure out the points to allocate for it as well as are they doing, you know, do you get points if you're in the lowest 80 or the second lowest 80? There's still some things they're ironing out in that, but that actually will not take place until the year after next year.
Right, and the prior year scores?
So just to let you know, and I have that information and I, I can send that to you too. I'll, I'll put that in a template so you see.
You could just add it, just right before the.
And it's 1819, so it's from the 1819 year. But, but to give you an idea, we, we had, we had, this year we had eight average schools and two good schools. In 1819, it was almost flip-flopped. We had seven good schools and three average schools. Everything else was the same. So we had three excellent schools back then in 1819. We had one unsatisfactory and two below.
But not necessarily the same.
That's right, that's exactly right. So I'll get you that, absolutely. I will get you that information in kind of grid format.
I wish we liked to see some consistency with each school. Instead of, okay, well after overall numbers is the same, then we're value fishing good, et cetera. But again, we'd like to see each one growing year over year.
Yep, I'll make sure to, to add a column onto that and get that out.
Same number, but different schools.
Yep. Yep, and also remember too, now back in 1819, for example, West Hartsfield was on there, not Bay Road, right? And so Bay Road now has different age groups with them. And so, you know, some of the schools were a little different, but I'll note that on the, the grid as well that we put out there.
Richard?
I'm not sure quite how to ask this, but I'm curious because I know the state does not recognize the virtual school as a school. And I know that they've had some very excellent students testing very well out of that. And I'm curious to how much it affected all their scores, how much that would have changed if those scores hadn't have been in here, just as a curiosity. I don't know if that's helpful or not, you know, but, you know, I know we tend to, you know, some that love the virtual, some that don't, but I'd be curious to see how much they affected these scores. Because they all have to, all the score, testing scores go back to the home schools.
They do, that's correct. They do, that's correct.
And if, you know, how much it's that they're boost up their credibility or their number here or rating here, you know, because of the students that they're teaching out of there and excelling, and all of a sudden, all their schools are going, scores are going back over here. And that's something we might need to look at and say, hey, this is making a big difference here.
Yep, and to, to your point, the scores for the virtual students are in their home schools, they are.
Right. They go back to their home schools, so I mean, they don't have anything to say.
But, but we do have them pulled out.
Okay.
For weekend.
Since Richard did bring up the virtual schools, based off of the numbers that you did give us, that you sent us in the update, we only had 15% of our kids passing in math and roughly 40-ish percent in ELA. So, I mean, my question is, I thought that, so roughly 60% of the students, at minimum, shouldn't be allowed to be continuing in the virtual program because they didn't pass technically both categories. So, I, whereas Richard said, you may have some very excellent students that pulled in, but we got a large contingency that drug, that drug scores down. And those get credited back to the home school so that, so they get penalized by those scores, especially when you only have 15% of your kids in math passing. Where are we with that? Because I, I, I thought distinctly, this, the criteria for being able to continue in the, in the virtual academy was you had to be able, you were passing your test scores. And right now, we've got 60% that aren't passing either and another 25% that are failing in one.
Well, yeah, when, when you say passing, obviously, like the.
Not meeting standards.
Not meeting standards, correct. So, so, and again, these are from last year, so.
That's the only way we have to go on.
Yeah, these are the students from last year.
Right.
And so, currently, obviously, when we saw the math scores, we made a point to dig in quickly on how can we help our students that are, first of all, how, right? Because how do you have that hot, you know, your ELA scores are actually in line with everybody else, if not a little bit higher, but your math scores are lower? Well, we got to dig in and find out what's going on and, and improve it. So, you know, a student's not failing if they, if they aren't meeting the math standards, but they are in ELA, but they certainly aren't performing, and we have to make sure that they perform.
Well, you've got roughly 60% that are, if you, if you only got 40 in ELA.
Right.
That are meeting standards, there's 60% that's not.
That's in all of our schools, though.
But the, but the criteria for the virtual academy was not all schools, it was if you are not passing, you couldn't continue, you couldn't be in the virtual academy.
Sure.
I mean, that was, that, I mean, that was a thing that parents signed.
Yep, and, and so, passing is not equated to the 40%. So, are they passing their classes?
They were, that was part of, you can make anything and have people pass in the classroom, but the standardized tests for SC ready, they are not meeting standards.
I think what you said, we just weren't, that's what we had decided, virtual qualifications.
Right.
Are we not enforcing that, I guess, is the question?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So, those students, are they not, were they not performing better in the classrooms?
And so, you've had students that were there last year that, that aren't there this year. Certainly, there's some students that have been taken out of there. And again, currently, what does the students look like? Again, math testing, you know, we just completed the first round of math, so we'll look at that. And we'll, you know, we got to see what the scores are. So, from last year's situation, there are students that aren't in, that were there last year. But there's a difference, again, I, I think all, all of the principals will tell you that if you're, if you've got a 40% achievement rate in your building, that doesn't mean kids are failing. That, that, they, you know, they may not be making hundreds, but they're certainly not failing with that 40%. That's not a pass rate, that is an achievement rate.
But they're not meeting sta, they're not meeting standards.
Correct.
According to the assessment that's given, that these ratings are based off of.
To, to be on grade level. They're not, they're not at grade level where they need to be. And, and again, you know, how does that compare to the other schools? We have to look at that. So.
I don't think we had any schools that were in 15% in math.
Right, but we did.
Except the virtual academy.
And, and again, math scores will be where we go with this. That's what we have to do. Otherwise, I, I can't tell you exactly what's going on with those kids other than the math scores. That's what we can tell you. And as soon as we have that data, we can bring it back and take a look at it. But Jamie, to your point, you're right, we don't need kids that are failing in the virtual program. That, that doesn't make any sense. None of us want that. There's nobody that wants to see students that are failing, that are not, you know, getting contact with teachers.
I just call the best chance is going to be face to face, and I've not been a big fan of the virtual. I think it's an alternative to keep our kids from eye graying away, yes, but truly, whether they migrate away or not, the goal is to educate them.
Absolutely.
And if it's face to face, that's what we need, and that was my concern, we agreed to do the virtual, hey, what criteria are we going to use to where they come in or go out? Well, if they're blasting on grade over here, okay, but if they're not, that's going to hurt, forget us and the statistics, they are not benefiting.
It hurts the students, absolutely.
So, I mean, again, we just got to get clear on the criteria that we're using for, and when will we use that to gauge when they're entering the red.
We're saying after first semester, there could be some going back into the school.
Absolutely, absolutely. The students aren't doing well. And, I mean, first of all, they're, they're regular grades that they're working on in their classes, but also, the math data that comes back as well, that shows us where are they on par.
And that also poses the other question and concern that we had before, are teachers in class, are teachers who are doing the virtual, how does that affect those, and then, because at some point, you got to pull them back, you can't put more pressure on our in, face to face teachers because we're bringing more, because someone else is going to have to come with them, if that makes sense. And that's going to be spread out, of course.
Yep, yep. And so, yeah, and remember, like, we're doing face to face, we're, we're doing, virtual teachers are first grade through eighth grade. And then, high school is actually doing, we, we don't have our teachers allocated to our high school. You know, that's the program that we're using that has helped with it, that's associated with those courses.
So, it does pull off our teachers.
Correct, for high school. That's right.
You have a question, anyone?
I, I guess my, I mean, my final question is, is, so, how are we addressing this? Because the, the low scores in math track with what you saw during the pandemic with virtual learning, that the math lagged behind because it's some, sometimes a much more difficult concepts, that's a lot of manipulative, and sometimes they end on, it's just a harder subject to teach, and it's reflected in these scores that you saw to a greater degree than what we saw in our face to face learning.
And, and so, again, what any teacher is going to do is to look at those test scores and then decide how can they give those students remediation, extra practice? How do you differentiate instruction with the kids that are in the classroom? I have this group that is lower than this group. What are the strategies I'm going to put in place? What is the extra time that I'll be able to allocate to those students? Are there other people in the building, such as the CT, that is able to also give some extra reinforcement? So, you basically have to go back to any student that's behind and start identifying, where's the weakness and how can I give them more support in that weakness?
So, how are we going to know when we need to put these kids back into face to face learning? Because I thought, once again, I go back to when this was proposed to us, it was proposed that they have to be able to meet standards. That was, that was it. Now, you're saying, well, they didn't meet standards, but we're going to follow them on math testing and then we'll make decisions. So, so, I, I know the decision lags behind, but at some point, if this child, if, if, we've got to pull, I mean, it may be what they want, but it's not in their best interest.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we don't do things because of what people want. If they're failing, they don't need to be there. And so, again, we'll assess where they are, you can, you do it at least at the quarter, if not the semester. But we've always said that there are kids that will go back into the face to face environment if they're not succeeding in virtual. And so, again, we're talking about test scores from last year, we need to see what the scores are currently with math and see how those scores align with the potential SC ready, but also, what is their day to day, what is their day to day scores? What is their day to day grades?
I, I just disagree with that because that's teacher generated, and that's very subjective. These, these are objective tests that everybody, it's a standard, it's the same standard. It's not what you in the classroom decided was going to be your subjective test, but your material that you covered.
Right.
I, I'm just.
And I, I would not want.
I think I've made my point.
Well, you have, but, but I would also say that I don't think anybody wants a teacher giving grades just to give grades. And I, you know, I think principals, that is their role.
So, so, okay, find this information for me then. I want to know these students who were 15%, but the, the 85% that did not, I'd like to know what were their classroom grades? And then, let's see how the classroom grades track with the does not meet.
Okay.
So, if they're making hundreds on tests, but they're, but they can't pass standards, there's a disconnect there.
And that would be for last year, and then also, what's important to know is how are they doing this year?
We don't have, we don't have a test yet to, to, to track them to.
But we got math. We do have math aligns with SC ready.
I think overall, in general, I think we just need to be very clear on what we're using so we're consistent.
Sure.
And lastly, you know, we lost a lot of students over the past two years. So, would that also affect things?
Absolutely.
So, when I'm looking at 1819, I know that's probably one of the things, that was one thing I was most upset about, we lost, and whether it's because they wanted face to face, whether it was, whatever their reasons were, we lost a lot. And, and they're not back. So, I was just wondering how that would compare and how would that impact those grades?
It would.
Whatever we did, we want to make sure what we do is in the best interest of our kids.
Right.
Number one thing, and if they are not succeeding in virtual, they should be back in the regular classroom.
I think.
Charles?
I think the question that Jamie wondered, I guess, sort of will, is at what specific time are we going to move these kids back to, uh, face to face? When do we decide that that 60% actually becomes a reality and they go back into their regular classroom? I think it's a, it's, it's, I think that's their real question.
And, you know, I.
And I guess what they want is, a, a lack of a better word, a date or, or timeline.
And, and I, I think in fairness to Carla Jefferson, who's in the room while we're talking about her program, Carla, do you have any information you could share with us about how we're identifying the math and what we're doing with our students?
I do.
Okay.
So, we, like Dr. Noon said, for English, our scholars are right on pace with those that are in person. We did see some difficulties with math this year, definitely middle school math. We had a brand new teacher who was new to the district, new to virtual, and so, spent a lot of time working with her, but she also retired. And so, we have started fresh this year. A lot of the things that we've done to improve math is to look at, for us, it is going to be math data because that is the indication that kind of gives, that we take three times a year that we can use to determine where students are. So, we have our PLC meetings where teachers have pulled out specific weaknesses that students have, and then we spend throughout the week and also on Fridays, core time, just working with them on those skills that they are struggling with. I think one of the things that I do want us to take into consideration is that there are 500 plus children that are in other virtual programs outside of the one that we have in Dorsey County. So, we do look at students who are being unsuccessful. A lot of it comes with attendance. We are having conversations and sessions with parents about the appropriate level of support that they're getting at home versus what they do in person. They come to us once a month for two days consecutive to work on skills and concepts that are better seen in person. We've had conversations with Mrs. King, Mr. Rivers about small group instruction and ways that we can better utilize that with our scholars in order to better improve that math data. So, we are working on that. I think at the end of the day, we are talking about parents who make a choice for virtual. If students are not successful academically, then they are at the semester, we have conversations with principals, and they go back at the semester. What we're finding is that a lot of them don't go back in person, they just find another virtual program to go to outside of ours, which means we lose that money. So, it is imperative to us that we work on providing skills, concepts, and instruction towards those students based on the weaknesses that we're seeing in the program.
But, but is it more important to maintain that money in our district or is the student is getting the best of what they do? So, in other words, if we say virtual doesn't seem to be working for that student, face to face is what they really need, we're not going to do that, we're going to go to virtual elsewhere. You know, again, so is it worth the fight just for the money?
We don't fight. If they're not being successful, if they're not participating, if they're not coming to class, if we have concerns about, like, if they're failing, then that, our recommendation is that they cannot stay in our program. But what we are working to do is to create systems with a new program that we are continuously working to improve in order to be able to see the success that we want to see.
Because I'd love to follow that kid where he goes to another virtual if he's still not successful. Again, that defeats the purpose of education in general, just period.
It does.
Correct.
It does, it does. So, I think, you know, at the end of the day, we are working to build a program that is only two years old in order to better improve instruction and support for, for our scholars.
But I think to also, I mean, to change, and what Jamie just said, isn't, it becomes a point, it's not about the money, it's about educating the students. And if we, if, if the parent may make a different decision for their child, but I, I think we have to do what is right by the child.
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly.
So, you know.
So, I'm not saying that we're not doing anything. I've kind of, you know, I've shared that we have our weekly, our weekly PLC, we have data conversations with where students are and looking at what their goals are for the year. They're having conversations with those scholars. We bring them in every month, two consecutive days a week to work on skills, hands-on manipulative activities. We have a math interventionist, we have a reading interventionist that we did not have last year. So, for, you know, just as a reminder, we were a one, I say one eight, you know, high school, because ours has been differently. We've been a one eight school that had an assistant principal who was also a CT, expected to work from first through eighth. We had a reading interventionist last year, and as you can see, our reading scores were right at where in person was. We did not have a math interventionist. We have added that aspect this year in order to be able to improve student data.
And, and to your point, the timeline is going to be at the semester.
Yes, absolutely. At the semester, they're not successful.
That's the timeline.
Right, and so.
That's the key.
You know, to be perfectly transparent, we have already started having conversations with scholars, with parents, and also principals about scholars who may be coming back because they're not being successful.
And, and so, I would say, you know, any program we've got, we want to support it 100%, make it successful. And I wasn't a fan of virtual, don't get me wrong, nothing against you, it's just, I like the face to face personally. But we've got an alternative, there were people that are wanting, there's a choice that's offered. But what does concern me more down the road, I don't want to find us spending so much of our resources on that relative to our, our face to face, and we're pulling from our face to face.
Sure.
It becomes unequal, whereas a greater percentage of our budget is going, not budget, but, you know, again, funding is going there to drag and make this happen, when we got people over here in the classroom, face to face, they're busting their butt, and we're pulling resources, we're not getting the resources they need, hate to say it, but that's kind of where our focus has been in each week. And again, that is, virtual's great, I think that's unfortunate, kind of where we're going, we just have to be careful with that, if that makes sense.
I would agree.
I agree, and I think, I just want to be clear, we are being very strategic with the way we're implementing virtual, and we're doing it differently than it has ever been done before. So, we've had to make a lot of adjustments. But again, I want us, you know, to think about, how many years does it actually take to be able to see a successful program? It's going to take a couple of years, it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of modifying, but we are holding scholars accountable.
And when I question, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you're not, we were questioning just what we had approved and what we had agreed to, and it sounded like things we had deviated a bit, so again, that clears it up. But when we say our high school is going on a, a regular program that has been implemented for years, it's a proven group, so to speak, so do we ever try to look at that and how can we model or emulate what they're doing, this approving system? Since you say, you're right, we're two years into this thing, and so, you know, we're learning as we go, but is there anything there that we can learn from that? I assume you're all digging wherever you can at this point.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at outside programs, when you're contracting out, all right, their data may not always be as reliable as proven because they're able to weed out scholars or students that are not being successful. They don't include them in their data because they've already dropped them, where we don't Where we don't have that flexibility, right? Ours, they're coming to class, and so even with attendance rate for, in high schools in general, right? A student has to be absent every single day for it to count against them. With virtual, that's different, because they may come the first period, they may not come the second, they may show up for third, they may show up for fourth. And so you will see that it's not, it's, the measurement is different. Um, so I'm going to be, you know, perfectly honest. I think what we're doing is the better way. It just takes time.
They may not be as successful as they appear to be.
Af, yes, sir. Absolutely. Um, but I do think what we're doing, we're, we're doing the right thing. It may take a while for it to show. Um, and our goal is to work on improving that by looking at the data that we have. And we do that on a consistent basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Got a question? Okay, we'll move on to action items, name of Lamar High School softball facility.
So, uh, in the board packet, um, I had given you all information about this request. Prior to COVID, again, we had a situation, it's prior to COVID, um, there was conversations that school personnel had had, um, with community members about this particular request. At the time, um, there was certainly no reason to not think that there was potential for that. And more importantly, it was before COVID. So, uh, I, I made an effort to talk with people that were involved with this. And basically, it, it had momentum in the spring of twenty. If you all remember what happened, we shut down for three months. Um, and then also, um, Kathy Gany retired from that school as well. And so that combination kind of slowed down movement on the request. Um, and for the next two years, uh, there just wasn't anything that was picked up on it. So, um, I, you know, from, from my perspective, if conversations had started, um, you know, with, with the community members and with the school about the potential for this to, to happen, um, I wanted to make sure that that was the case. And I was able to, to confirm that. So, you know, again, that, that's, that's the information that I, that I wanted to bring to the board about that situation. And, you know, I, I think most importantly, that the board needs to make that decision about how they feel about that request.
So what you're saying is since the board had passed a policy where we would no longer do that, and we were moving towards that hall of whatever.
Yes, Hall of Fame. Yep.
Yep. But you're saying, although, you're saying this started prior to that being passed. And although it did start prior to, it was not approved and was not presented, but you're saying since it was presented prior to, and given the unusual circumstances of COVID, that you're presenting it back to the board for reconsideration outside of the policy?
Was it presented to you prior to COVID?
No, uh, it was in the works.
Did we have a request in hand prior to COVID?
I did not.
Okay.
But, but the school did. The school had the request, um, and the school had plans on moving through the stages to take care of it. And, and, and again, it, it had all started actually in, in August of twenty nineteen, um, which is when the discussions had started. But then, again, by spring of, of twenty twenty, it had all kind of shuffled down. And so, you know, I, again, I, that, from the community member standpoint, they thought they had put in the request with the school and that it was going to be moved along, um, and due to circumstances that took place. But, but yes, to, to, we, we passed a policy recently that said we don't name facilities.
But we have a, but we have a mechanism to honor them, correct, through that Hall of Fame?
Hall of Fame. That's what we have put in place. Yes.
So there's still, there's still.
This was actually initiated by the school prior to any policy that we had.
But our current policy that this is now being presented under is, is in effect.
Our current policy, uh, request now would not be honored. This was something that was requested prior to that policy.
Did we have, do we have that in hand, that request in hand?
Not a written request, but we do have a substantial verification that it was going to have been done.
I guess my position is, we have a new policy. But we have not established a group, if you will, to do the, the, um, new policy, implement the new policy. So at this point, it's kind of, you know, you're kind of in a limo between the two. What I would probably suggest is that we honor the request because we don't have the, the mechanism in place. And since it was made prior to, um, it being done, the policy being done, that we go ahead and allow it. But I do think that we need to go ahead and implement, um, a committee, or committees at the schools to decide how they're going to, to select people for the, um, for the Hall of Fame.
Yeah, we already got one.
But the question is, but it has not been implemented.
Hasn't been what?
Implanted.
We have the application. We haven't selected the, um, committee within each community yet, but we're ready to do that. We're just kind of trying to get through the holidays, but.
Yeah, but, but my point, uh, Audrey, is that I, I get that, but at the same time, tonight, it has not been done. And do we penalize Lamar for it not having been done? Or do we set a date that it has to be done and move forward?
Well, that, that committee is also going to change over the years. I don't know whether it matters whether we collect, whether we appoint them or not. Now, if we're going to prove it, I, and I'm fine with proving it, because, but I would base it on, it was presented prior to a policy being made, wasn't allowed to go through because of COVID and all the other things, it kind of got held up and stopped. Before, I'm going to say blame on a committee because the committees, I mean, I'm not going to open up a committee in Rosenwall to get something that may not come for three years, and that committee's going to fall over. It is set in place, that policy, and it gives guidelines. So once someone presents something, then that school, it puts their committee together, pulls out committee together, and then makes that decision. So in this case, again, I think you're a safer bet to make sure that this board, there's no sense in waiving any policies. We don't need to get in the habit of waiving what's used to have a policy. But if it was presented upfront, in hand, the school had it, wasn't presented to us, you're right, one, I agree with that. But again, because unusual circumstances, I don't have a problem considering that. Um, but that is the only way I would do it, because I, not that I want it, I'm happy for it, that's great. It's not the point. Is the board sets a policy and you have to adhere to it. In this case, it was there, just not brought to us because everything else in the world going around. So there, I would say, for those reasons, I would, I would probably consider.
So twice now, we do make a motion to accept it, give a second, or whatever.
I'm going to make a motion to accept it.
Second.
With those considerations that it was pre-COVID and somehow it got lost in, in the chaos.
Mr. Chair, um, right now, I'm reading a letter, those email to us. I believe all board members received it back, um, September twenty-eighth. It's going into details about when all, all this started transpiring. Um, early May of two thousand nineteen, he was honored at the athletic banquet in Lamar High School for his dedication. So, yeah, around.
Yeah, it was all.
Yep, says right there, um, their mom, you know, Mrs. Wilkes spoke with Kathy Gany of guarding the letter above on nine twenty-seven. Um, that Kathy Gany informed mom that she initiated the naming of the softball field at Lamar High School. After, um, yours shortly spoke, um, speaking with her, um, said that she also told her mom that she had told Burgess that she wanted to be the one, the last thing she did before she retired. But we were told that was presented to Dr. Newman, not the board. And was told since she was a departing principal, she could not have done that, um, that that would have been done by the incoming principal.
So with a change of hands, I mean, if it is just whether the board wants to support and, or consider Dr. Newman. She'll come to the board, we'll hold him accountable for that. He had a lot of stuff he was dealing with. So again, I'm not a fan of breaking policy, but in this case, a little different circumstance.
All right. So we got a motion to second. We can beat this all night.
Right.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Eyes have it, motion passing. Thank you. Okay, property transfer acknowledged with letter, Dr. Newman.
Okay.
Yep, um, in the board packet that we had, this is for the governor's school. And they are, um, there's some property being transferred from, uh, that is, that is being, taxes are being paid on this property right now. And those taxes, you know, the school district gets taxes from some of that property. And so now it's going to be, it's, it's been given to the foundation who is giving that to the governor's school. And so it will be non-taxable after the gift. The foundation does.
Okay, the foundation owns it and it pays taxes?
Yeah, property owners gave it to the foundation and, and currently.
How, how, how long has it been in the foundation's name?
I don't know that.
Year, ten years, three?
I, I don't know.
So, so the question, so, okay, so, so individual had it, gave it to the foundation, and the foundation is going to give it to the governor's school. Uh, and the foundation is a taxable entity, uh, the governor's school is not, so we're having to approve this?
Yeah, so the governor's school apparently talked at the state level, and, uh, the district and county council have to approve, uh, the, the gift, because, because there is a tax impact, although minimal for us.
I was going to say, what, what acreage are we talking about here?
It's.
Is this the land behind the governor's school?
It is. And, and it's not all the lots either. It's, yeah, you.
Correct.
You, you're looking maybe two and a half acres worth of property, if I had to guess. So just looking at the plots.
Since it says fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars in taxes, um, raw dirt, max. So since we receive benefit from that, we have to sign off on that?
Yes.
If it goes to any non-taxable entity?
Yes.
So this is the first time I've ever seen this, and I know that there's been money, or land given to non-taxable entities, and that was the first I've ever recalled doing this. I will make sure that we're not doing something that.
So, yeah, and, and the request actually came from the governor's school. So they, they're the ones that contacted me and said, hey, uh, we were talking with, uh, the folks at the state level about this gift to be able to utilize the property. Uh, and they said that we need to receive a letter from the school district, from county council, and from them about.
So is there's no reversionary clause or something in here while it ties in the district? You're saying it is simply because we receive benefit as it currently stands and will not receive benefit in the future?
That's right.
So if I had a piece of land and I gave it to Coker or I gave it to whatever, then you're going to have to approve me gifting it to them?
I think it has to do with if they're a school, they're a public school as well, or they're, they're a, you know, a magnet school.
Is that a part of this new legislation?
Not that I'm aware of.
The legislation of, of passing, if you're not going to use it?
If you're not going to use it.
That, that seems to be the same scenario there.
Not that I'm aware. Jamie, to your question, I think it's because it's the governor's school. Like if Coker, if the property was given to Coker, I don't think we'd be having this conversation.
But if it were given to us, if I had a piece of property and I gave it to you?
Yeah, so, so, or to another, um, charter school, for example.
Butler.
Yeah, yeah. That would have to be approved.
Never heard of this place. Haven't either.
I mean, because there are people who give land to their churches, right, all the time.
Yeah, but it's, it's because it's a school, like I said.
Churches pay taxes?
No.
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 So same situation?
So you, you, so you're getting it from a taxable to a non-taxable?
Yes, again, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, so I'm saying it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it, it's because they're a school. And it, and it's taking it away from our school district. And they're technically a different school district.
Did we just take their word that this had to be done, or have we followed up with our legal on this?
I have not talked with our legal about this. But I certainly can, can, can get advice from them on the request.
I'd just like to understand, I'd like to understand the request better. So can we table this to the next?
Again, don't have a problem, I mean.
No, I don't have a problem.
We're talking a thousand dollars probably, um, but at the same time, I, I just don't understand it.
Okay. And they had actually even offered to, to come to the board meeting if, if, you know, for questions too, but I think.
I want to do that, I think we, it's probably just a good explanation to, you know.
I think it'd be prudent, we can certainly check with our legal counsel and be sure that we're not doing something.
There are small lots, I'm looking at.
Yeah, they're, they're nominal revenue.
Yeah, I mean, if any, but I don't know how we would.
Yeah. That's why I sound like a problem, it's not the money.
Milliken gave this property to.
The president or whatever that we're doing.
Milliken gave the property to Hartsfield Community Development Foundation, and I mean, it's, they're all side by side little lots. There is. Each other's worth three or four thousand dollars each, it's not, not generating any revenue, I don't.
Yeah, that's their assessed value, so you know they're not generating revenue from a tax standpoint. So, yeah, I don't have a problem at all with that, it's just.
They're empty lots, I don't know why we would have to do it, but they, apparently we're told we have to.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll have a motion to table on this for next meeting?
Is that all right with them? Is that going to impact, hurt them in any way?
Not, not, I don't think there's.
Just want to make sure they know we don't have a problem with this.
Right.
How would we table it?
All right. Why don't you make a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table it and hit first in a sec, make first in a second, yeah.
Okay.
To, to the next one, until we get more information.
Yeah. All in favor? All right, we'll just bring that next meeting and, uh, vote on it.
Sure.
Okay, moving on, superintendent's update.
I just had a couple items. Um, one of the, congratulations to Hartsfield High School marching band. They placed second in the state, in the state competition a few weeks ago. Um, that is the highest that they've ever placed. And they, uh, had, just were very excited, we're, we're excited for them. So again, Hartsfield High School marching band placed second in the state, uh, band, marching band competition. Uh, and that's, and that's the highest that they had placed. Also, um, the Donington High School jazz band, uh, has been selected for the school board's annual conference. Uh, but they'll actually be doing a virtual performance. So they'll be recording, uh, the jazz band, and that that will be played, I guess, in the morning, you know, of the conference itself, that they'll be doing that. So, uh, you know, again, congratulations to them. We, uh, have a district office Christmas luncheon on December eighth. So board members, if you would like to join us on December eighth for the annual Christmas luncheon at the district office, I wanted to, uh, put that date out. Um, I had mentioned in my board update about the Veterans Day celebrations. Uh, we had a lot of celebrations on Friday, um, at many of our schools. And, um, was excited for the different schools and the events they had. I know, I think Lamar High had a, um, breakfast that they had folks come to, which was good. Um, and then Pate Elementary always does, uh, a big event that they have. And so, um, so anyway, several of the, the schools in the district had, um, the Veterans Day celebrations. I know I mentioned, I hope everybody had a chance. If you didn't, Mr. Govan, I think you mentioned you went to one? Yeah?
Yep. And so Mayo had a virtual discussion through Schoology. Um, DCIS held a Veterans Day recognition. Pate, again, they do a, a big one. Uh, they celebrated week long. Uh, and also had a Veterans Day parade. Uh, Thornwell had a Veterans Day recognition program as well. Um, with, uh, students and dance and choir. So again, um, kudos to our schools and celebrating our, our folks that have served our country.
our schools and celebrating our, our folks that have served our country, including folks on this board. Um, and then, uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is that we, uh, DHEC has once again approved, um, school sites to be testing sites for COVID and flu, so COVID and flu, and, um, these will be antigen testing, uh, versus the PCR before, they, they were PCR tests that were sent away, these will actually be, uh, antigen te- uh, tests that will be conducted by, uh, the vendor's personnel, uh, and, you know, rapid tests, so there'll be quick results for that, and, uh, in light of, um, the flu numbers that we've been seeing and, and most of the medical providers that I've talked with, um, it would probably be a good thing to have that available for our families, uh, for our students in the district as well as our employees, um, and I'm waiting on confirmation, it may even be available to their family members, so I'm waiting to get that confirmed, if that's possible or not. Uh, we would initiate the two sites like we had in the past, which was, uh, West Hartsfield and the district office, um, again, people, uh, would be in the system where they would pull up, um, they would, uh, sign into the portal system, um, that, that they've already registered for, uh, and they would rece- receive their results via, um, text or email. So, again, I, I think in light of what we're dealing with, just another, uh, service that we can offer that's not a charge to the district.
Test positive for the flu, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, so, you know, the guidelines, and Wanda, you probably know about this as much as anybody does, but you have to be fever free for twenty-four hours, and then you're able to return to school. So, you could test positive for the flu, but be fever free for twenty-four hours and be able to go back to school. So that's different than COVID, right, 'cause the COVID guidelines are different.
What, what do we do now? I mean, most people, they don't test for, I mean, they can test for flu, if you're sick, you got fever, you get in the bed, I mean, it's just what you do, you hydrate, and in a whole lot, you get different.
Don't need a medicine, grief it up and change?
Nope. I just don't know what, where we're...
It, it's, you know, it's just, i- if, if a child is sick and running a fever, it's a place that they can get a test, the parents know, you know, and I think the bigger issue too is COVID, you know, if you, if you feel like your, your child or, uh, the, the employee may feel that they may have COVID, that's a different set of, um, circumstances on how long they have to be out still, so...
Okay.
Yeah, that's everything for the update.
Okay, questions, anyone? Alright, move on, board member, board member input, Mr. Morris.
Just an announcement, since we still have some principals and people here, um, on Sunday afternoon at four o'clock, the members of the Omega chapter in Hartsfield will be having president, the new president of South Carolina State as our speaker, and we would invite you to come.
Richard?
I'd like to say congratulations to all the award winners tonight, super job, I'd also like to thank the Virtual Academy for inviting me to their Beta indoctrination ceremony, if I remember correctly, they in- inducted thirty-two new members into the program, very nice setup and everything. I'd also like to thank Brockington for inviting me to their veterans program, and I think we had plus twenty veterans that showed up, and they gave us breakfast and congratulated us and thanked us for our service, and it was a real nice time, both events.
Yeah, Wanda. Wood?
Oh, well, I see, we've got one principal that I visit a lot, um, I know Dr. Bridges already walked out, and I'm sure Ms. Cooper's watching, um, those three principals, you know, I visit their schools a good bit, I kinda wanna brag on them for a minute, um, yeah, every time I go in there, yeah, we preach new safety a lot, um, yeah, the last visit I did was kind of unorthodox and random and sporadic, where I brought here treats in, uh, but, security wise, yeah, everything's locked up tight, um, yeah, I actually, I ended up having to take some stuff down to my daughter's classroom at Kane, 'cause they were having their Halloween party that day, um, before I could even make it halfway there, the assistant principal, yeah, he'd already met me, you know, he escorted me to the classroom, yeah, door's locked, yeah, he had to fumble to find his keys, you know, get into the classroom, um, yeah, few students walking down the hallways, yeah, a lot, you know, mannerisms of students, um, and you can tell just near the atmospheres have changed completely, um, from what, you know, the atmosphere might have been at, you know, where I was in school, you know, not too long ago, and I'm not, you know, making a space in that air to feel too old, um, let her, you know, remind, you remember those days, but, um, I just wanna say, you know, good job to those, um, those three principals on, you know, their operations.
Good deal. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to welcome our principal here tonight, too, we have a good little number, good to see Ms. Austin back, and back in school, she's out for several weeks, and good to see her, uh, I think Spalley Middle received a grant through their band, like twenty-three thousand dollars.
Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation.
Yeah, so congratulations to them, that's, that's great, appreciate that. How are we on our vacancies now? Mr. Chubb?
Twenty-two, holding steady, not a lot of movement since last month.
And, don't wanna, you know, Dr. Dawson, you know, we miss her, uh, she was a board member for over thirty years, and like, we said, we, you know, we had good times and bad times together, she and I, we've always, uh, not always agreed on everything, but we always remained friends, and she'd be greatly missed for her, all her expertise, and you know, we're all better persons for having known her and getting associated with her, and, um, we miss her. Okay, we'll move on to personnel items. Entertaining a motion to approve the personnel?
Yeah, I move to reaccept the recommendation of personnel, and in comparison, it doesn't, it'd be accepted in law with it.
I'll second.
Second, basically the second. All in favor to approve the personnel?
Alright.
Code, eyes have it. Okay, now entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, record based determination higher than transfers, contractual matters, and superintendent's evaluation.
We'll be going to executive session, with all of the above.
Second. Wanda, second. Discussion, all in favor of that motion?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Take a two-minute break.
And that we give every employee in the district a thousand dollar bonus. Full time employee a thousand dollar bonus and part time five hundred dollar bonus.
Christmas bonus.
A Christmas bonus.
Ho, ho, ho.
And I hope all of them enjoy and have a joyful Christmas.
We have a second.
Second.
A second. Any discussion on this?
Um, Mr. Chair, I would like to also mention, um, we discussed it. Um, make sure that our SROs, if their departments do not issue them one, that they be included.
Is that an amendment to the...
Is that amendment to the Constitution?
Constitution.
The Constitution.
It's a motion.
Make that amendment to the motion.
Give a second on the...
Have a second on that?
Second on the amendment.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Aye. Aye, aye. Ayes have it, okay. Now, we'll vote on the motion with the amendment. All in favor? All in favor of the motion with the amendment?
Aye.
Pose. Ayes have it. Okay.
All right.
And the other motion?
We do. Mr. Chairman, after hearing the board members' comments regarding Dr. Newman's performance, I move that we recommend that Dr. Newman has overall met or exceeded district expectation on his evaluation for the 2021-2022 school year. I further move that as a result of Dr. Newman's overall satisfactory evaluation, we authorize you to execute an amendment to Dr. Newman's employment contract with the district, the terms of which were reviewed and discussed with the board during the executive session, for which provides for, among other things, a one-year extension to his contract through June 20th, 2025, a four percent plus step increase in his annual salary effective retroactively to July 1st, 2022.
I'll second.
Second. Motion's second. Any discussion on this? You're none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Ayes have it.
Chairman, I would be adjourned.
Do you want to collect these?
There. Yeah. All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, our lady.